I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that the meeting has been duly called, and that a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. It is 6:00 PM. If you would stand with me, Mr. Sanders is going to lead us in the invocation, and Mrs. Bush in the pledge of allegiance.
Stand with me. This gracious Lord, we are thankful for the rain that you have provided to us. We are thankful for the many, many blessings in which you have provided to us, and we pray your blessings upon our school district, upon our staff, our administration, and all that are a part of our teaching and educating our students to make them successful in life. We pray that you would give us discernment tonight to do your business. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. (Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. (Inaudible) One state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders and Mrs. Bush. Welcome to the meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees. We are pleased at the crowd and excited for all the good news tonight. Dr. Stockton, Item 2A, Special District Recognition Star.
At this time, I'll ask Veronica Martin, our college readiness specialist, to come to the podium and introduce our very special students.
Good evening, Mr. Huskins, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. This evening, we recognize and celebrate our graduating star students. First, we must begin with the most intricate part of our student's success, their parents. At this time, we would like for all of our star student parents to stand at this time.[136.01][136.01](Applause) Thank you for coming and celebrating with us this evening. This group of students have been led by a remarkable group of counselors. The students have participated in various activities through their four years of high school. The counselors meet with the star students on a regular basis to give them their support as it relates to their academics, jobs and careers, and post-secondary opportunities. Annually, the students participate in the ROCE Challenge Course to promote leadership, team building, and character development. Over the course of four years, the star students have visited colleges and universities such as the University of Houston Central, University of Houston Downtown, University of St. Thomas, Lone Star College North Harris, Navarro College, Prairie View A&amp;M, and a host of others. We have conducted an exit survey for the 2015 graduating class. The results indicated 64% of our students are first generation. 86% of our students says that they have gotten to know adults from their campus and district through this program. We asked how they viewed their future and how it has changed over the years. These are some of those responses. "I'm actually graduating." One says, "I really see myself attending college." "School has been hard for me, but with effort, anything is possible." "Things have opened up for me. Now I know I can afford to go to a four-year college." "I didn't think I would get this far. Now I'm going to college." After graduation, 59% are going to a two-year college, 23% are going to a four-year college, 5% are going into the military, four enter the workforce, four plan to attend a technical college, and then we have five that are undecided. Some of the colleges of interest are University of Houston, Lone Star, Texas Southern University, Blenheim College, Sam Houston, Autonoma, Guadalajara, Texas A&amp;M University, and that's just to name a few. Some career interests include culinary, pharmacy, law enforcement, engineering, education. One wants to be an administrator, and another wants to be a counselor. Auto-technology, nursing, and cosmetology, and there are so many more others. 38% of our students have applied for financial aid, and several have received scholarships. The Gallow Scholarship, the Honor College Chancellor Fellow, Bar Association, Eastern Star, Migrant Scholarship, Gamma Kappa, Skills USA, and Riddick Woman. They all have received those scholarships. We have about three students that are going to speak to us tonight, and they're going to speak of their experiences with the STAR program. The first student that we're going to have to come to the podium is Justin McWashington from Conroe High School.[325.72][325.72](Applause)
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Stockton. I'm here on behalf of Conroe High and telling you how amazing the STAR program is and how much it's affected my life in a positive way. See, I heard about this word of ear. Like, it just flew in. I was in class, and I was like, "Kids are doing the rope course." I was like, "I know where that is." So, I never personally been back there, but I actually went and checked it out after that. And I seen what they were doing. During lunch, I went out there and watched them and all the teamwork they had, and all like the bonding. I want to be a part of that. And me being a positive person, I wanted to bring our positivity to a already positive group, see if I can like help it out and see what I can do with my personal being. And Ms. Lipscomb, our wonderful counselor, she just like pulled me in and said, "Hey, this would be best for you. We go to these colleges. We do this. We do this." And all she had to say was college, and I was with it. I was like, "Yes, college is where I want to go." I think the most memorable time is when we went to, I think it's Lone Star North Harris. We went in the meeting room, and it was just like sparks were flying. There was positivity here. Like, everyone there was like, "Hey, college is the best thing." And before that, I was like, "You know what? If I don't go to college, I might have to struggle, but I'll make it." I realized that if you don't go to college, you not really don't do anything. I was like, "That's not okay." So, by me going there and then being positive and showing me the better way, that's what I want to be. I want to be somebody positive that helps my community any way possible. So, that's why I love the STAR program.[428.81][428.81](Applause)
Thank you, Justin. The next student we have from Oak Ridge High School, Remy Born.[441.81][441.81](Applause)
Hello, members of the board and Dr. Stockton. I'm from Oak Ridge High School. My name is Remy Born. I've been a part of the STAR group since freshman year. One of my counselors called me in, and I wasn't really sure what it was about. And then we started having more meetings, and I kind of realized, you know, college, you know, might be a good thing because before the STAR groups and before high school, I, you know, I'm from a family of 10 kids, and so I figured, you know, financial is going to be hard. And so, coming into this group, it helped me realize there's financial aid, there's scholarships. There's a lot more things than to just worry about financial difficulties. And so, looking into more colleges, I feel so crazy. I've actually qualified for a full ride scholarship for Lone Star, the honor scholarship, which you mentioned. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So, it's really exciting. I've actually heard about it through the STAR program. The most thing I've gotten from the program was learning that college is a way to go and that it's not just about financial problems. So, I really like the STAR program, and I thank everyone who put it together. Thank you.[515.01][515.01](Applause)
Thank you, Remy. The next person we have coming up from Woodlands High School, Aleah
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Stockton. I first want to thank you guys for making all this happen and letting me come and speak tonight. I was introduced to the STAR program by several of the counselors at the ninth grade campus my first year. And at first, I kind of thought, like, "No, I don't want to do it. They're just going to stress college on us more, and teachers and parents do that enough as is." And at first, that was part of the reason why I didn't want to go. It just seemed too stressful. I didn't want to be a part of it. But I gave it a chance anyways, and I don't regret it at all. I've recruited very many people from my school to join, including my own sister and best friend. My sister recruited one of her best friends to join. We've visited a lot of schools that I really enjoyed going to, especially U of H and Prairie View A&amp;M. Prairie View A&amp;M was one of my biggest options for a while. For a couple of years to go to, I liked that it was a small community, and it was in a small town. The homes to live in looked like actual homes, so it didn't seem like you were at college. You felt like you were at home. That's one of my biggest things. I don't like being away from home. I learned also that like financial aid is a great thing for college. It's amazing that almost anybody can apply for it. It's definitely something my family needs. Coming from a single mom with two teenage girls, that's pretty hard to live with. And we've had our struggles, but being in this program and learning all the different opportunities to make or earn money for college definitely changed my views on it. And all the support and positivity that everyone has brought in made college a lot easier for me to choose. So, with STAR program, they helped me decide that I do want to go to Lone Star Montgomery Campus and then transfer to Texas A&amp;M for forensics and criminal justice. I just wanted to thank everybody for making that possible and changing my eyesight on
Thank you, Aleah. Now, we're going to have the counselor from Candy Creek, and we'll start giving out our certificates.
Good evening. We have a great group of students here at Candy Creek I've been privileged to work with, and I'm very proud of all their hard work. Our first student we're going to recognize this evening is Martin Alfaro.[679.00][679.00](Applause) Our second student is Christian Austin.[697.63][697.63](Applause) Next is Brooke Fly.[709.69][709.69](Applause)
Good evening to the board members and Dr. Stockton. I am the counselor for Conroe High School, and our first member is Jesus Morales.[758.75][758.75](Applause) Our next member is Justin McWashington.[770.38][770.38](Applause) Our next student is Justin Suarez.[780.23][780.23](Applause) And our last student is Kobe Young.[790.63][790.63](Applause)
Good evening. I'm Sehurt Woods. I'm the counselor from Hawk Academic Alternative. From Hawk, we have Nathan Benitez.[810.32][810.32](Applause)
Good evening. My name is Sheila Doakes, and I am the counselor from Oak Ridge High School. And this evening, I have with me our brightest shining star student, and that
Hello, I'm Vicki Woods-Hinkle from the Woodlands College Park. And I'd like to recognize
Hi, I'm Kelly Stewart, representing the Woodlands High School. And our first bright star student is Aleah Mitchell.[947.13][947.13](Applause) And next, we have Matthew Agnisti.[959.01][959.01](Applause) This is the graduating group for 2015 star students.[990.43][990.43](Applause)
I'll be brief. On behalf of the board, we just want to say congratulations for a job well done. It's hard work, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes. But you did it. And because you did it, you set an example for our district, for future people. I appreciate you recruiting your sister, and your sister recruiting others. So, that's what we like about this program and the positive benefit that we heard about tonight. And so, I just want to say again on behalf of the board, congratulations.[1042.01][1042.01](Applause) Your first.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Good job, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
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 Good job.
Congratulations.
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 Well, she would just have led it to the last one.
Wow.
Maybe the first one.
I almost wanted to pipe in, "Yeah," as soon as I said it.
Well, it would be real easy. It would be real easy to end on a good note, but guess what? That's not the only good note we have at CISD tonight, okay? So, as everybody exits, it's part of that program, we're going to call Item 2B, Special District Recognition for our Child Nutrition Ambassador Awards. Dr. Stockton, you can wait a minute if you wish.
Yeah, you might want to let a little bit of that go.
Sorry about that. I jumped the gun.
That's all right. That's all right.
Go ahead.
Give him just a minute so you can be heard.
Okay.
Well, that certainly was worth the wait.
Wow. That's awesome.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite from Hughes to the front to introduce our Child Nutrition Ambassador Awards.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Stockton. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize our Child Nutrition Ambassador Award winners. Our first recipient is Ms. Melissa is the cafeteria manager at Runyon Elementary. She has nine years of service with the district. She works well under any circumstances, and she's always professional. She's patient, and she works well with the staff. She can handle any situation, and she gets the job done right. She's an asset to our team.[1252.83][1252.83](Applause) Our next recipient is Ms. Aska Ashley.[1267.48][1267.48](Applause) Aska is an associate at Oak Ridge High School ninth grade campus. She's been with the district since 2011. She's very knowledgeable in food preparation. She takes it upon herself to help others even when they don't ask. She pays close attention to details and gets along with everyone. We're lucky to have her in CISD.[1299.01][1299.01](Applause) Thank you.
Well, ladies, on behalf of Dr. Stockton and the Board of Trustees, we just want to say thank you for all that you do. You guys are truly unsung heroes in our district. And keep in mind, always keep in mind, that your work is always appreciated, and you are essential to the team here. We just really appreciate all that you do. So, thanks a lot, guys.[1335.83][1335.83](Applause)
Item 2C, Special District Recognition Transportation Ambassador Awards. You know, children that are hungry don't learn, and children that don't come to school can't learn. So, we're very appreciative of both of these groups tonight. Dr. Stockton?
At this time, I'll invite Sam Davila, our Director of Transportation, to the podium.
Good afternoon, Mr. Huskins, Dr. Stockton, members of the board. It's my distinct pleasure to announce or recognize this year's Ambassador Award. I'd like to start off first with, from our Woodlands Transportation Center, Mr. Scott Leatherwood.[1411.38][1411.38](Applause) He's going all the way around.[1422.72][1422.72](Laughter) Scott is actually one of our technicians at the Woodlands Transportation Center, but he does that part-time, his full-time job as bus driver, it seems like. Scott's one of those gentlemen that is always willing to help out. He runs a route in the morning, run it in the PM, and then work on the buses in the middle of the day. And we just can't function without folks like Scott that are there to help us do the mission, and we appreciate everything Scott does. And he does it without complaining. So, that's a bonus for us.[1452.33][1452.33](Applause) The next person I'd like to introduce is Sandy Cobb.[1464.01][1464.01](Applause) Sandy kind of operates out of all the centers. She goes wherever she's needed. More recently, we've needed her to actually help us with a difficult route. And she excels at doing that as far as caring for the kids, helping them understand that there's a way to ride the bus, and particularly is our special needs kids, and she has that way with them. And anytime we have a difficult route, we know we can call on Sandy. Now, she left us, and then we brought her back in. And so, I think we got her stuck on this route right now. She loves her kids, and her kids love her. So, a wonderful person.[1511.83][1511.83](Applause) Next, I'd like to introduce Anna Snow. She's from our East County Transportation Center.[1533.83][1533.83](Applause) Anna has been a godsend as far as helping morale out. She's always a positive, always uplifting. She actually was at our company picnic this year, her and her husband Greg back there. I guess he's still here. There he is. Helped us with actually cooking, and we had a Survivor theme for our transportation this year. And they just took it and ran with it, and had shish kebabs, and they went all out. But more than that, Anna is a trooper. She's always there, and she helps people feel happy about coming to work. And has done so much at the East County Center to uplift morale and do things that, you know, a lot of us are not able to do. So, I really appreciate everything Anna's done for us.[1584.22][1584.22](Applause)
And Sam, thanks for inviting the board to the dinner.[1598.41][1598.41](Laughter)
It was our ninth annual, so 10's going to be big next year, right?
That's right.
Last but not least, and I'm going to try to get through this without getting too emotional, What can I say about Herman? We've been together a long time.
Eighteen years.
Eighteen. Yeah. I'm sorry.[1640.11][1640.11](Laughter) When I first started in transportation, Herman was at our Delmore Center in Houston. So, we've known each other a long time.
You and me, too.[1654.61][1654.61](Laughter) Dr. Stockton and board members, 18 years ago, I met two men, a tall one and a short We were at ATSD at the time, and I just retired from Metro, and somebody was going to chill out. And I was down on the school bus for my first time, and also getting a good route. I didn't know. So, when I walked in the door, it had me a route, the boot camp route. For 18 years, I've been with boot camp routes. 18 years. Y'all will realize what our drivers go through with those kids. Parents teach them at home to respect the drivers. They're the first thing to see in the morning, and the last thing at night. So, please, honor your kids, teach them to respect the drivers. And to Sam, we go back a long ways. I remember we had a strike one time at ATSD.
You were going to go there.
We were going for more money. So, Sam and his group, they were hiding behind the building and peeping.[1736.11][1736.11](Laughter) So, John 13 was there. I said, "Look, daddy, over there, get a right there. Get him right there."
Karen, put that camera away, would you?
Do y'all know we got our money the next day? Thanks to you, Sam.[1747.13][1747.13](Laughter) By the way, the only way to get off the bus, I got sick. And that was the only way to get off the bus.
But you're still with us.
That's certainly something hard to follow, but let me just say, some of the best times you have in school are on the school bus, and some of the most frustrating times I've had in my career are on the school and some of the most frustrating times I've had in my career are on the school bus as a bus driver for students. So, I certainly understand your pain. Thank you, guys, for what you do for our kids, and we appreciate your service to our district. Thank you.
I guess the only appropriate word for that is a blessing. So, anyway, Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for citizen participation? Very good, okay. I'm going to, since I was privileged of the President, and move item nine A, naming of the principal of San Houston Elementary School, up to now. Dr. Stockton?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Husbands. Board members, as you know, one of the most important things I do is recommend principal, principals to you for your consideration. And I'm pleased to make two recommendations tonight. First one, at San Houston Elementary School, and that is Christina Upshaw.
Mr. President, I move we approve as presented. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Like, sign, opposed? And congratulations, Ms. Upshaw.
President Husbands, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton, I'm honored and humbled by the opportunity to serve our students, staff, and our community. And I'm thankful for your confidence and trust. It is truly a blessing, and I'm excited about the great things we will accomplish together at San Houston Elementary. I would like to thank the many mentors who continually demonstrate what it means to be a leader, and my family for their steadfast support. Today with me, I have my husband Saul. My parents, Julian Elton. My brother Jason and his wife Jennifer. My sister-in-law Edith, her husband Ethan, and their boys Jake and Josh. I could not, I could not do it without them, and I thank you again for your support.
And item nine B, naming of the principal of Geesinger Elementary School. Dr. Stockton?
Okay, I'm also very excited to make this recommendation, and I'd like to recommend Melissa Hammond for the position of principal at Geesinger Elementary School.
Thank you. And I would like the honor of making that motion if somebody else would second it, please.
I'd be glad to second that motion.
Thank you. And any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Like, sign, opposed? And congratulations, Ms. Hammond.
President Husbands, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton, I am honored for this opportunity to serve as principal at Geesinger Elementary. I am a very proud high school graduate of Conroe I S D. I am a proud parent of three children attending schools in Conroe I S D, and I am proud of the fifteen years that I've served as an educator in our district. I am honored and privileged to serve the community, the staff, the parents, and the teachers at Geesinger Elementary. Thank you. I have my husband Reed Hammond. My children Claire, Caroline, and Trey. My nephew Sebastian. My mother-in-law Susan Hammond. My parents Jay and Bonnie Friesen. My brother Brandon. Thank you.
You are free to leave, by the way, unless you would stay. I think there's a restaurant calling you somewhere.
Make or buy. Well, after all that excitement, it's a little hard to get down to business, but we shall try. Item three is the consent agenda. You've had that for a number of days. Does anybody wish to remove an item for a discussion? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Like, sign, opposed? Thank you very much. Item four A, Dr. Stockton Wells Fargo Grant, excuse me, two thousand and fifteen.
I'll ask Dr. Heinz, Deputy Superintendent, to come present that grant, please.
Good evening, President Husbands, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. Tonight, I'm here to request permission to apply for the Wells Fargo Grant. The Wells Fargo Grant is a grant that promotes academic achievement, particularly geared for students that are economically disadvantaged. And its priority emphasis is through kindergarten through twelfth grade, and also to provide training for teachers. And the projects that our committee is recommending is that we purchase six, if we're awarded the grant, purchase six Chromebook carts. Chromebooks are same devices we use in that grant with Washington. This would be two carts for each of the intermediate schools. In this round, we're targeting Bosman, Crier, and Travis Intermediate. And so, we're asking your permission to apply for this grant.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Like, sign, opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item five A, approve change order for outdoor court renovations in Conroe Transportation Center. Dr. Stockton?
Okay, at this time, I'll invite Easy Foster, our Director of Plan and Construction, to the podium for the next three items.
President Husbands, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton, tonight, I bring forward for your approval, an amendment to the C M R I S K agreement with Dean Co. Construction, which is our C M, our construction manager, for the Oak Ridge School Road project. Oak Ridge School Road has been completed, and we've realized savings from that project. And we're gonna apply these savings towards the amendment that we're gonna talk about tonight. We're proposing work to improve an outdoor court service at O A Reeves Elementary, and we're replacing an outdoor court service at Lamar Elementary. The court at Lamar Elementary is just, is being replaced because it's suffered some root undermining. So, it's got, it's an asphalt surface that has bumps and other tripping hazards in it. We're also working with our Transportation Department to improve the access driveway from the Conroe Transportation Center back gate to the I forty-five feet of road. We're widening this drive and the gates to allow two-way bus traffic along this driveway. Total cost for this work is five hundred forty-nine thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars. We're applying a hundred ten thousand three hundred eighteen, three hundred eighteen dollars of savings from the Oak Ridge School Road project. The contract will be amended by a net total of six hundred fifty-two thousand, a net total of four hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars. And the funding is allocated through the general fund. At this time, I ask for your approval.
Do I hear a motion?
So, move approval. Second.
And a second. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like, sign. Item five B, approval of the guaranteed maximum price of multi-campus renovations. Mr. Foster?
Right now, I'd like to request your approval for an amendment to the C M R I S K agreement with G T T. G T T is a C M, or construction manager, for the multi-campus summer renovations. We're gonna call last summer's renovations Phase One. It's where we replaced several, or removed several skylights from several of our buildings where the skylights had reached the end of their service life. Phase One was completed, and we realized savings from Phase One, and that savings is being used towards Phase Two. In addition to the skylights that we removed from Phase One, we also did some parking lot lighting upgrades to the front doors of those campuses, six campuses in total. Phase Two will address bus loop lighting on the backside of those buildings, and as well is gonna continue into skylight replacements for six additional campuses. The total cost for Phase Two is eight hundred seventy-one thousand three hundred one dollars, of which we're applying two hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and five dollars of savings from Phase One. The contract is to be amended and will increase by a net total of six hundred fifty-two thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars. Funding for this work is allocated in two thousand eight bond fund, and at this time, I request your approval.
Motion? Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, discussion?
I do have one quick question. On the new six buildings that we're replacing the skylights, are we doing any of the lighting work, or is that just the skylight portion?
In areas where we're removing skylights?
Yeah, the new.
We are supplementing with interior light?
Mm-hmm.
And areas where we're replacing an existing skylight, no lighting?
Right, no, I mean, you said that at the six campuses that we did last year, we also did the lighting to the front door area on the exterior of the building. Are we doing the exterior lighting on the six ones that we're doing the skylights this year?
Well, the six campuses that get skylight replacements this year, not have the same parking lot layout.
Okay, so there's just not, it's not an issue at these six campuses?
That is correct.
Okay, awesome.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like, sign. Thank you very much. And item C, capital improvement update, Mr. Foster?
As we do each month, I'd like to give you an update for our capital improvements that we have in progress throughout the district. Now, we're gonna start at the beginning. Starting with Oak Ridge High School ninth grade campus, this campus is on schedule. The construction here, as you recall, is to add some classrooms, add science labs, add art labs, add, reconfigure the admin, and increase the cafeteria space. Like I said, the project is on schedule. It is scheduled to turn over for start of school next year. What you're looking at here is the interior of the newly expanded library area. So, as, this is the last area to start the internal inside work. The classroom portions, you're starting to see the gray walls turn white, so the finishes are beginning. As I said before, this, this building is on schedule, so we're right where we need to be. Rain has affected the exterior brickwork, but we've got two crews working on the job, trying to make hay when the sun is shining. But we still have plenty of time to finish, finish the exterior. At Oak Ridge Elementary, we're installing the brick as the weather will allow us on the exterior of that building. As you can see, we've got a large amount of the big equipment, which is what we needed the mechanic room additions for. The equipment for this campus has been delivered, it is on site, so this project is also on schedule. The interesting part, the work really turns inside, and it gets really intense when the summer break happens. Students and faculty leave for the summer break, we will move in. Again, removing the ceilings, adding the fire sprinkler systems, adding the other systems, and updating the mechanical systems as part of this project. It is on schedule, and we are set to complete before the start of school next year.
Good job. Thank you, Mr. Foster, good job.
Thank you.
Item six A, approval of two thousand and fifteen sixteen Employee Group Health Program. Dr. Stockton?
Mr. Cox, will you come and present that item, please?
President Husbands, members of the board, Dr. Stockton, I'm here tonight to present the proposal for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen Employee Group Health Program. I recommend the Board of Trustees approves the employee medical coverage rates for the self-funded health insurance program. You'll recall that we approved the new health plan this past, past year. We've implemented it now this year, and we're, we're seeing the results. We do have a need to raise premiums. And in consulting with Etna, they, they indicated that we needed to raise our revenue to thirty-eight point five million. This is the proposal that we have put together, working with Etna. You can, I wanna walk through this. You can see the green column represents the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen costs of our employees would incur if we were in T R S, and they took the base, the primary comparable plan in T R S to us. This is the one we benchmark against year, each year. And you can see that, and this assumes that C I S D contributed three hundred ninety-six dollars per month to that plan. The employees would pick up the balance. And I want to tell you that I don't have, I don't know what every district contributes, but we've done a lot of, of study in this area. I'm very confident that C I S D is contributing well above the average contribution. I'm not saying we're the highest, although I don't know of too many that are higher than us. But we're well above the average in terms of contribution per employee per month. And, and you can see what the rates would be under T R S two if we were contributing three ninety-six. As you can see, the beige column is what our employees actually paid, and you can see it's well below what they would have paid under T R S two. And the yellow represents the proposal for this coming year. We did have to increase the employee and spouse. We obviously had bad numbers for employee and spouse last year, and we, we underrated that. We, this doesn't make up the full difference, but it makes a good move towards adjusting that. But you can see that we would be moving the rates up. We also will be moving up the contribution of the district from three ninety-six to four twenty-eight. We will stay well ahead of most districts. As you can see on the right-hand side, this, this scenario will create C I S D funding of twenty-four point five million in the plan, and employee funding of fourteen million. That's a sixty-four, thirty-six percent split roughly, for a total of thirty-eight point five million. Now, that's based on, on the current enrollment in the plan. That, that enrollment will go up because we will add teachers, but it'll go up proportionately. So, it should be, it should be workable. We still think our employees are gonna have a very favorable plan, but we are having to make an increase. And this is the increase that was recommended by Etna. Any questions?
Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
And a second. Any questions?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Yes, what was our increase yet last year?
Well, last year, we threw out the old and started from scratch again.
That's right.
And in fact, we actually didn't, we didn't really have an increase last year because we had, we were very optimistic. And we believe we have a good plan. Let me just reinforce that. We believe we have a good plan. We still need to tweak it some. We're, we're finding some areas that, that it's not working as great as we thought it would. But we basically didn't raise rates last year. And in one, in one, I think, like an employee and spouse, we may have dropped rates, probably a mistake. But, but, but we really didn't make an increase. a mistake, but, but, but we really didn't make an increase last year.
Besides the premiums or any of the specifics going?
No, there are no changes.
Are changing there?
I will tell you that, that, the, the high deductible health plan, there's, it's closed to new enrollment. It has been closed for a couple of years. We leave it open because it's an HSA, and we don't feel that we should pull that away from the employees that are in there, but we're not, we're not taking new enrollment in that plan.
Mr. Cox. The ACO network being limited to Memorial Hermann rate, ACO?
Yes.
Okay. What I don't understand is the limited network, I understand there are slight variations within the deductibles and such, but I don't understand a limited network costing the same thing as the base tier two, okay? Usually when there's a, there's a range of plans, the more limited.
If you look, if you look in there, you'll see the benefits are better under that.
Well, even so, I, I just, in better relative, four hundred dollars on the deductibles, frankly, I, I just don't under, I don't understand that concept. Just as a general rule, when you offer a multi-tier plan, there's a price, there's a reason why you're accepting the more limited.
There's a difference in the co-insurance, is it a hundred percent versus thirty-five?
And that's just a matter of how quick you get there, not really so much, very little out of pocket, thirteen hundred. Anyway, I, I was just curious about that. Also, how does the ACO network, is there, is there cost sharing with Memorial Hermann if we have good loss results?
There's profit sharing, yeah.
Profit sharing.
Or some, there is a sharing.
Now, now, have we ever experienced, or is this just the second year in the plan?
This is our first year.
Well, okay, this is our first year. And so when, when do we know whether we share in that? Because I, I wasn't sure how many, the Etna whole health shows all the employees in tier one or two, does it not? It broke out the HDHP, but it did not split those. I don't know how many of the employees or what our specific loss results were.
They move, they move back and forth depending on who they go see. In other words, if they go see somebody in the plan or out of the plan.
Let me, let me clarify. An employee picks one of those tiers a year?
No.
They have both tiers available to them?
And if they go to, they can go to St. Luke's Hospital, but it's going to be tier two, you know?
But if they go to Memorial Hermann, then it's tier one?
Yeah. They can go in and out of the plan.
Then, then that answers my first question and, and, and explains that it's not really a tier, you know, a, a step up plan. The next question I have is reference-based, frankly, it's just something I just learned about, reference-based reimbursement, okay? Our program is administered by Etna, and my understanding is Etna reviews claims on a TPA basis, that reviews hospital claims of twenty-five thousand dollars or more. Yeah, I don't know if you know that or not. I don't know if that's the actual figure for our plan. I can't really answer that, but that's just the general rule. And I was wondering if that's negotiable, if we could get them to review, because I mean, generally, there is overcharges across the board in PPO networks, okay? And this reference-based reimbursement is all about defeating those costs, being reviewed by professionals. Now, I'm, I'm not sure who reviews Etna's over twenty-five thousand dollar claims, but for example, you can have it done five thousand dollar or more claims if you have an independent TPA. Have we ever, have you ever heard that reference to that from Terry or from anybody else? And, and is it an option that we would negotiate our, you know, the claims that we had reviewed so we would find out if we're being overcharged, if you're with me?
I'll have to look into that.
If you would, please. I, I'd like to, I'd like to hear back, because you understand, it's not the plan that I'm, I understand, but the cost, there's only a couple of ways to contain cost, and that, you know, and there's deductibles and costs and drive the cost up and, and, and limit u, u, usage and utilization, or you try to contain the, the cost that typically are overcharged.
If somebody wrote that down for me?
I'll, I'll, I'll tell you what, I got it. I'm here for you.
Paula got it as well.
Trust me, it is, it is very important, I think, in, in, in controlling our costs. Again, I think it's more than fair, trust me. I mean, you're still out of the market, look at TRS. I mean, you're still out of the market to the benefit of the employees, not out of the market.
Well, I do know, I do know that, that Etna challenges, and in fact, we have several under investigation now of claims.
Yes.
But I do not know what level it is, and I will have.
I heard some remarkable figures today. It, it, it surprised me. And so I'm not telling you, I, I'm in the health insurance business, and I did not know about this before today, so, nor did I expect you to. I thought maybe Terry was here and might have known, but I, I was anxious to look into, again, it's about controlling our costs, not about taking something away from employees or charging them more. It's about saving us money, you know, on claims. So thank you, and any other questions?
Have a motion in a second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Thank you very much, Mr. Cox. Item six B, Dr. Stockton, banking resolution extending depository contract.
I ask Mr. Cox to the other podium.
Before we begin, I'd just like to make a statement for the record. I will not be participating in this discussion, nor in the vote, because I have a personal conflict of interest in the fact that my employer is the depository, so I'm just going to sit here.
And abstain.
And abstain from the vote.
I recommend the Board of Trustees extend the existing bank depository contract with Woodforce National Bank, Mr. Sanders' employer, for a two-year period commencing September one, two thousand fifteen, and ending August thirty-one, two thousand seventeen. The depository contract must be renewed every two years. Our original contract was awarded to Woodforce National Bank for a two-year period commencing September one, two thousand thirteen, and ending this August thirty-one, two thousand fifteen. A school district and the district depository bank may agree to extend a depository contract for two additional two-year periods. This is the first of two optional two-year extension, extension options that we have. I recommend that you approve the extension.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, why?
Any question?
Why?
Well, because we have a, a good arrangement. We pay no fees, and in this environment right now, that's a, that's an excellent proposal. A lot of districts are not generating enough interest to put, to cover their cost of banking. In addition, they give us good service, and we, we have a good relationship.
That's all I needed.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. And all abstentions, like sign. Very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Item six C, consideration of the use of eminent domain to condemn property, request of the board approval of the resolution. Dr. Stockton.
Mr. Cox, please.
I recommend the Board of Trustees approves the use of eminent domain to condemn property and approves the resolution confirming the existence of a public necessity for the district to acquire fee title to property for use in the development, construction, and operation of a new high school. The district currently has a portion of a proposed high school site in the Oak Ridge feeder zone under contract. The land to be acquired by eminent domain and referenced in the attached resolution will complete the proposed high school site. Funds will be provided from the Capital Projects Fund. This is a very critical project, and I recommend that you approve it.
I move that the Board of Trustees of Conroe Independent School District adopt the resolution declaring the existence of a publicly necessary necessity for the construction of a new high school campus and authorizing the acquisition by adoption, purchase, or exercise of the power of eminent domain of property and property interest necessary for such school, and authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire the fee simple title to the property described therein. Such property being a forty-five point nine eight acre tract of land located in Montgomery County School Land Survey, abstract number three five oh, Montgomery County, Texas, being particularly described by meets and bounds, exhibit A to the resolution for use in connection with the development, construction, and operation of a new high school campus.
Mr. President, I second the motion.
And we have a second. Any questions or discussion? I have one. And, and I just, basically, I want it on record, okay, that how many tracks and how many times have we tried to find a track big enough for a high school campus? I mean, you know, how many tracks did we look at or go to or find out that they weren't suitable, or they, you know, whatever?
We pursued a, a site, which, as you know, is going to be sixty-five to seventy acres at least, in this area for three years. We, we, we visited with every developer in the area and, and looked at every piece of property. We, we could not, we, we found one developer willing to work with us, which was Toll Brothers. Others were willing to work with us, but not on acceptable sites. And we, at the time we started talking to Toll Brothers, we thought that they would be able to deliver this site land as well. It ended up not being, not coming to pass. They could only deliver half of the property we need, so we now, and we did pursue this property, but we were unable to have any successful negotiations, and therefore, we are now, we, we are going about it in a very professional manner. We, we have hired, we have a top-flight appraiser who has put an appraisal together, and we're, we're making a very fair offer for this land.
And Mr. Cox, just to clarify, with eminent domain, we're not taking the property. We're offering them the fair market value of the property according to the appraisal that we have of the fair market.
Exactly.
And actually, actually, it's a, it's, they have an appraisal, you have an appraisal, and it's a, it's an independent panel that chooses what that, some, some, probably some, some compromise between.
And, and we may, we're, we're making them an offer. We hope that we resolve the issue even before that.
And last but not least, in this eminent domain, and in part of the problem, of course, in that fast-growth area of the Oak Ridge feeder zone, we're not condemning or eminent domaining anybody's home. This is raw land as it stands, which is even harder to find than seventy acres, okay?
Exactly.
Additionally, I, I want to note, because I've asked several questions about this throughout the process, being a new board member, I want it on record that this is less than ten percent, correct me if I'm wrong, than their total land that we're condemning, and we have backed off of certain areas in order to give them even more marketable financial benefit, to keep certain pieces of land that will be of more financial benefit to them later.
That's exactly right. The toll, the piece of, the Toll Brothers property that we're taking fronts on the, on the Grand Parkway, this piece that sits next to it, we backed off three hundred feet so that they could keep the frontage road.
Right.
Same principle in front of College Park.
Right.
Exactly.
Same, same situation.
We, we have gone to great lengths from my questions and discussions with you and Dr. Stockton to do everything in our power, and so this is not a measure that has been taken lightly by the board.
Any other questions or discussion for Mr. Cox? All right. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Thank you very much, Mr. Cox, for entertaining our questions and, and for your hard work on that project.
Thank you.
Item six D, approval of two fif, two thousand fifteen-16 Employee Dental Program.
I recommend the Board of Trustees approves the optional employee dental insurance program. The current optional dental program for Conroe is consists of two plans, a MetLife fully insured dental HMO, and two, an I, the IMA self-funded reimbursement dental plan with maximum benefit amounts. We, at the request of our, of our HR department, we looked at some other options because the, the, the IMA program, which was a self-funded reimbursement, really was not providing the service level that we were looking for. And in this process, Etna brought several propos, well, we, we got various proposals, but we ended up selecting a proposal from Etna, which included replacing both plans, and in each case, providing better benefits to our employees. The, the plans, the Employee Benefits Committee is recommending that both plans be converted to Etna. Etna has proposed plans with improved employee benefits, broader network, lower employee premiums, and our administrative fees, along with the improved service that we were looking for. The Benefits Committee approved the proposed changes on May thirteenth, two thousand fifteen by a hundred percent vote. I recommend that the board approve this change.
I have a motion.
Second.
Got a second.
Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Great job.
Item six E, financial reports. Dr. Stockton.
I'll invite our Executive Director of Finance, Darren Rice, to the podium.
Good evening, President Huskins, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. I'm here tonight to present the financial statements for the district for the month of April. These statements will include the general fund, debt service, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. First statement we're going to look at this evening is the balance sheet for the month. The balance sheet includes our assets, liabilities, and fund balances for the district. In the asset section, we always like to look at our cash and investments and, and, and see where they are. We'll concentrate on the general fund since it is our largest fund here. General fund has cash on hand of five hundred dollars. Bank deposits of seventy-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. I was wrong about that. We have invested in our external pool funds, roughly ninety-six million dollars. With Capital One, we have invested ninety-nine point six million dollars. And our long-term investments, a little over fifty-seven million dollars invested there. Next statement we'll look at is our balance sheet. The balance sheet has our assets, our liabilities, and the detail of our, sorry, income statement. There we go. Clicked wrongly. The income statement has our revenues and expenditures. Our, our revenues are made up of local and intermediate sources, state program revenues and federal program revenues, but we'll look at the local and intermediate sources since that is our largest source. The largest generator of revenues for the general fund and debt service fund is in property taxes and food services from food sales, and from self-funded insurance, it comes from premium contributions. I'd like to, since we had some questions last time on child nutrition, just kind of explain a little bit. If you look at the excess of revenues over expenditures right now, it shows two point five million dollars. I would just like to say that in child nutrition, they, they earn a lot of revenues right now, but after May, they will not be earning any more revenues, and we still pay our employees over the summer, so they're ten-month employees, but we pay them over twelve. And they also have not received their insure, their utility bills yet, so we charge them once a year at the end of the year. It's roughly a million dollars is about what their charges for utilities now will come.
So you're saying it's a timing thing? You have a buildup right now? So, so on an average year, let's, let's take out that, that, the, the.
A little spike right now.
Correct. So what do you, what would it be the?
It's probably going to be about a million bucks.
A million bucks?
Yeah, about a million.
Now, you reassure me that the, the fees that we charge for lunch are as low as we.
As low as we possibly.
Low as we can get.
And the reason that is, is because we do receive money from the federal government, and they require that if they're going to reimburse us for that much, we have to at least charge our normal meals at same price.
Understood.
Projective fund balance for general fund, not much change since last month, looking at an increase of about fourteen point one million. As we have discussed, our tax collections are coming in, so this has the assumption that at the end of the year, we will find that we have some excess fund balance, so this does show the transfer to debt service of the sixteen million dollars. So I kind of took that liberty so we can show exactly what that'll be, is about fourteen million dollar increase. Self-funded insurance, for the month of April, we had total revenues of two million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, total expenses of three million four hundred and seventy-seven thousand. For the month, we had revenues under expenses of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. For the year now, we're seven hundred and twenty-six million dollars in the negative.
Six thousand?
Seven hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Right. Right, you shouldn't do it.
Oh.
I wanted to correct that. That's on tape, that's on tape, so I wanted to make a.
Seven hundred and twenty-six dollars.
I do, I do want to add. Now, just, Aetna went back and reevaluated our funding level after we got this number. And the number that we used was based on this number, so. And we actually had to up our premiums as a result of that.
Cover that.
I'm just curious, is there, I mean, I'm seeing certain trends of certain months have negatives in others. Have we noticed, is that common that those same months?
Yeah, summer, summer and spring break and, and winter vacation.
But April's not spring break.
Well, I understand, but I didn't say it couldn't happen.
Well, I'm, I'm, okay. Okay, so then the claims coming in in April from spring break can march. Okay, I'm just.
Delayed reaction.
Got it. Lot of money.
Our one hundred and nine million dollar bond transition plan, we've currently expended and encumbered seventy-seven million dollars of that. We're estimating another twenty-nine million dollars to complete the programs for a total of a hundred and six million dollars. That'll leave us with some contingency of about three million dollars in the plan. Our investments for the month, we ended March at three hundred and eighty-three million dollars. At the end of April, we have three hundred and fifty million dollars invested. The wham of the pools in Capital One is one day, yielding almost eighteen basis points. The wham of our long-term investments is seven hundred and forty-seven days, yielding almost eighty-seven basis points. And the wham of our combined portfolio is a hundred and five days, yielding roughly twenty-seven basis points. And the benchmark for school districts is the ninety-day T-bill, and it's just barely over one basis point. That is all.
Very good, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, we appreciate it.
Good job.
Item ten A, Considerate Waiver of Two-Reading Policy Requirement and Adoption of Revision to Local Policy DIA, FB, and FFH. Dr. Stockton?
Mrs. Gladys, I'll ask you to do the last two items.
Thank you, Dr. Stockton. This particular item, we're asking you to do something that we rarely ask you to do, and that is waive your Board Policy Requirement BF that says that before a policy is adopted, we'll read it twice, once, present it to you as information, and then the second time, present it to you for adoption. The reason that we're asking that it be waived for these two particular policies that we're making not really a substantive change in the sense that we're not changing the rules of the game. We're merely wanting to put the correct name of the person that holds this position of Section 504 Coordinator in these policies. It currently has a former employee's name, and we would like to have that corrected so that our policies online are accurate. So I would ask that you waive the Core Policy Requirement BF and then go ahead and adopt DIA, FB, and FFH this evening.
Let's move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just, one clarification, we're not putting another employee's name in there, are we? Are we just putting a title?
No, we're putting a name. The federal regulations.
Requires?
Have a real person in there, otherwise we would not.
That was, that was my question. I didn't understand why we couldn't just put a title so we didn't have to keep coming back to the Board anytime it changed. But you answered it.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sanders, I had the same thought. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. And we pass this, item ten B, Except for Review Revisions to Local Board Policy DEC. Ms. Gladys?
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. It seems like I think we bring this policy to you on an annual basis. It always needs tweaking of some sort. But the changes that we're recommending this time really are the product of a committee that's been working on them for two years. And the goal of the committee was to try to find ways to improve or reduce the number of leave days our employees are out, at the same time to take, make sure our employees are cared for in times of need. And then to be sure our employees are in the classrooms teaching our students, because we all know that when there isn't a teacher in the classroom, it really is lost instructional time, as fabulous as some of our substitutes might be, particularly when it's on a long-term basis. And so over the course of two years, the committee looked at various ways to try to achieve those sometimes conflicting goals. And what we've come up with was the list that's in your item tonight. We're making some changes to align definitions. We've tightened our definition of what a catastrophic illness is. That's the definition that we use when we determine whether or not an employee qualifies for a sick leave pool. And that is only after all of the other leave that they have available to them has been exhausted. We're revising the order in which days are used if employees don't designate. State law says we can't pick what, you know, what type of day you use, but we've, we've kind of reordered that to make it easier for them to use the ones that they cannot accumulate, to let them, those come off the top first. We've provided additional guidelines for administrators to use about approving discretionary leave. You know, we can't ask people why they want days off. But if it's a discretionary reason, we have some parameters in place that would allow you not to. For example, during, before star testing, before holidays, when it's difficult to get subs or having substitutes makes the business of the district hard to keep going forward. We never really before addressed in DEC paid vacation days, which we do give a group of our employees. And so we've added that into this policy. We've had some concerns about our non-exempt employees not using the days for which they're not paid within the fiscal year. And so we've added clarification of that, that for the days that they're not paid, they must not work them during that fiscal year that they're given to them. And then we've also added a little bit of clarification to our neutral absence control policy. And so I would present those to you for information, and I'll be asking you to adopt them at your meeting in June.
Do I hear a motion?
To adjourn.
Yes, I said we don't have to vote on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize for reading.
You can. A motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn, and we stand.
Good job, sir.
Second, second reading yet. I thought maybe we were just going to skip the second reading.
I'm going to speak to that.
Good to see you.
You too.
Just wanted to introduce myself.